Don, it looks like you have a live feed up on your Brady Bunch tile.
Yeah, that was taken during the blizzard.
Looks very much like I just went out and got soup a little while ago and it pretty much looks like that right now. For the roads, Ed.
Okay, not bad. I've got an hour or so. I'm approved to get off for an hour or so.
Thanks. We're just gonna wait a minute. For. Chris to hop in. Hey, Chris. We have Ed, Ed with us. The roads are decent and he's got an hour. So we're gonna try to.
Let's roll it.
Yeah. So calling the meeting to, a special meeting to order at 2:02. You got that, Joyce? So this is.
Yes.
So I think we're gonna, this is really meant to be a sort of first pass. Let's get our ducks in a row on. Just philosophy of where we want to be. Last night at Board of Finance, I asked them for Pearls of Wisdom. What is their message back to us as we head into this? And the, the clear, clear consensus was keep the mil rate flat. No doubt about the message. So that's the message from the Board of Finance. So with that. I think we should take a look with some basic pieces in mind or my sort of two cents. I know that we've, this budget process has been the same for many years where there's a worksheet that's turned in. Because we're in a, you know, unique year, a second unique year. And I think that everything that I've been hearing at the state level with the economy recovery, we're not even in the recovery phase from this one and we're still in a recovery phase from 2008. That we need to make sure that we do everything. That we can do to be fiscally responsible. And I think that's gonna have us dig a little bit deeper as far as process. And for any, so I'm gonna just throw out there right from the get go that I see some. Figures here that indicate new stuff. And I, I'd like to have anything, and we can, you know, we'll follow this up with a, an email from Barbara and I to the department heads or just Barbara. I don't see her on the call. I think she's working in Cornwall today. But I'd like to see anything that's new, have narrative justification and, you know, to include a quote from a vendor justification, reasoning for the, whatever it is, widget service increase. Cause we need to be able to, the three of us need to be able to have a, you know, a deep dive conversation about all this stuff. And without that. There is, you know, we do do the workshops with all the department heads, but I think for the public and visibility. And to improve the process, I think that would be sort of my initial, after looking at this initial. Idea or request that is certainly up for conversation. With, with you guys, with Chris and Ed.
Is the Swift House the first thing on the agenda?
Yes, it is.
Oh, did I? How could, you guys can like wave your hands. I'm sorry. I don't have.
I was letting you finish and then I was gonna tell you.
By all means, feel free to interrupt me.
Okay.
So.
So what, what are we dealing with on the Swift House? The, the reports in?
The report's in. I don't know if you, I assume, Chris, you helped write it, so you, I assume.
I did not. I mean, I, I read it, but I, you know, it's, and it did the heavy lifting.
Okay. So just going to the, the back page, I'm gonna, I'll share the screen. So.
Thank you.
I'll look at it together. Hang on one second. It's not showing. Oh, I know why it's not showing up. There we go. So for. Efficiency purposes, I'll leave it to. You all to read the, you know, all the other pieces and parts. This is sort of the. Crux of. For this conversation, I think, is the, these costs.
Well, if I may just sort of do. What they would do. So we met, we did all the things, we, you know, we spent time, clearly, we came to the board for two specific things. One was to eradicate the animals that were in there, the infestation that was done. And then we came back for additional funding. It was an emergency. And, you know, between Joyce and. Zan, we were able to tighten up all those, those components. So where we are right now is the building, for the most part, is secured and free of roads. The third part of the, the. Task force goals was to decide what to, to weigh in on what should be done with the building. And, and then. You know, to, to say if what to be done with the building, if we could get some rough estimates. So I think the general, the consensus between the three of us was that we still maintain and own the, on, on the building. Now, in fairness to our process, we didn't go and actually look at market value as to what that, what it would, what it would fetch in the marketplace. And we didn't even consider sort of, well, what if we just turned it over to another entity in the town or, or, or some sort of quasi. Quasi-town building, if you will. We came to the conclusion that it was an, is still an important building in town that it has some limitations and it certainly has. You know, probably not high traffic use as much as a community house, but people do use it as an alternative site. And that the taxpayer. Should at least have a consideration as to and weigh into whether this would be something to keep primarily given the fact that there will be some expense down the line to get it up and running and then beyond that maintaining it. So the figures that you see here are based on rough estimate, well, not even rough estimate, it's pretty good estimates in the marketplace today from contractors. And the idea that at some point, we believe the town will have to invest about $120,000 to get it up and running and, and, you know. Really being a usable community space. One of the challenges that we found was a decoupling of the monuments from, from the building. And so that was a, that was a challenge that we looked at and probably one of the reasons why we talked about, we didn't even talk about selling it. Because selling it with the monuments on it would, would be a tough, a tough one, we thought. So what we also did in the interim is also, I believe, we asked for $30,000, $35,000 in the capital plan and then we increased the budgetary line item to, for next year's budget to reflect. You know, these changes and these, these modifications that we need. So that's it. And that's a recommendation. Any questions?
Yeah, so this 35,000 this year. Meaning. This fiscal year?
This fiscal year. So, so given, given the, and I don't think that was put in the budget that I could see, but I think. Not for today's discussion when we go into the budget, but, but when we do a breakout in the workshop where we're looking at all the town buildings, I think it's appropriate to bring. Zan and Marge in with a, again, a justification as to what, where and how, and can we fit this in the budget? Because clearly it's a need. So, and there it is.
Okay.
The roof, the roof is probably the most, you know, most important component for two reasons. One, because it is a roof and, but moreover, it's a roof that is, is quite old. But doing the roof then means doing chimneys and lots of other decisions to be made.
And this was from. Okay, from one roofing contractor. So this isn't for this, this was confusing this year. This is for, but then in here it says 2122. So this is to be put in the, the budget that we're talking about today, right? There's not a special appropriation that the task force wants for in the next four months prior to June 30th.
Correct. This is a, is a recommendation from the subcommittee to the Board of Selectmen that $35,000 be put in there. To take care of the, the roof and, and one chimney for 2122 budget.
Okay.
It's not a cap, it's a capital improvement, but it's so necessary right now that it can't wait the five years like, like it is, we put 35,000 in the capital plan or 30,000 in the capital plan, I think it was. Five years out so that. You know, we could do, replace the heating cooling system there. There's no cooling system, but the heating system and add the cooling system.
Okay. And the rest, the rest of this is all, this is all a request for the, the 2122 operating budget as well? No?
No, because there, these are estimates, what, what we tried to do is outline what the cost to the taxpayer will be in the future if, if the taxpayer agrees with the subcommittee. The Board of Selectmen agree with the subcommittee and the taxpayer agrees to, that roughly there's going to be an investment of close to $120,000 to get the building. Up to a, a position whereby we would be using it and. And making it comfortable and safe and usable. It's an investment we have, you know, we recommend doing. It's not only worthy of the building, but we think it's worthy of the people who would use it now. Not, not decided or even brought into the conversation is whether we rent it out, whether we just let the, the civic groups use it. I don't, you know, we haven't decided that. What we decide, what we wanted to do is paint a picture. So the taxpayer knew that if they were going to accept the subcommittee's recommendation to keep it, in fairness to them, they would need to know how much they would have to pay to, to get, to keep that. That makes sense?
But for a point of clarification, it's not just the 120 that we're asking for, or that the subcommittee is asking for in 2021. They're also asking for the $6,500 in the operating budget and the $35,000 for the roof. So you're really looking more at like 165,000. In, in the upcoming budget.
Yeah, I don't, I may be wrong, but my understanding is this $120,000 is not for 2021.
I. 2122.
I'm sorry, 2122, thank you.
I believe that you explained to Zan that there, that we would ask for an appropriation for that.
Well, I think what I did was that that is a only route that one could do outside of a budgetary.
Right.
Process.
Okay.
I just, the only thing that's in the immediacy for 2122 is the roof and the chimney replacement.
Which is the 35,000.
And then, as Joyce points out, there was an increase in the. The regular budgetary line for the Swift House. That's the recommendation as well. Of 6,500, correct, Joyce?
Correct.
From, what is it now?
Like 500 bucks.
6,500.
No, what is it currently?
500 currently.
Is that the? Repairs line?
Yeah, it was broken up between the repairs line and the maintenance line. Yes.
Repairs is $750 and maintenance is 5,500.
That's because there was money given to the Swift House this year by the Board of Finance, if you remember last year. So you have to look like two years back in the budget. For the actual number that really.
Okay. So these are actuals, it's like $412 during 1920 for maintenance and 300, $551 for repairs.
Right.
So in the proposed, there's 4,000 for 2122. But you see that going actually up, it should really be 6,500?
No, we already have that built in. It's a total of 6,500, correct? That's, I see 48.
4,000.
55. And then. You know, it's something, it looks like the repair section was beefed up to 38,750. I don't know why that is.
35 for the roof and then the additional 60, additional balance for the 6,500, so there's another 25.
All right. So then all, I got it. So everything, so it's, you see that gene under the repairs and 513. It's 35,000 for the roof. The balance then adds up with everything else in the 6,500.
Okay.
But it's still an increase significantly over the $500 that was budgeted last year. Actually, it's more than 500, isn't it?
So without, if you take out the roof, that line is 3,750. Yeah, it's significantly more, plus 4,000. So now that line is, that, those two lines, maintenance, repairs, without the roof is 7,750.
Correct. That's what was there, plus the additional $6,500 that the subcommittee recommended.
Oh, so it wasn't increasing it to 6, 6,500. It was increasing it 6,500 on top of what was existing.
That was my understanding.
Okay. So going back to this page. Really, how you explained it, so I'm understanding this correctly. The. The task force is looking first to. Understand from the community what the desire is. And then, based on these figures of bringing it up to. A very basic renovation. Usable space. I wouldn't even really call it renovation.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's not gonna be basic, it'll be nice. So it'll be akin to what the community house went through in a renovation a number of years ago. Where it went from, you know, number of years of sort of being the same to having an injection of, of capital money and improved money and it, it made it a much more. Usable space, I think, for, for the community. And, and so I think that. Under the same concepts and ideas and auspices, this is sort of the, the, the route that we think should, it should, it should take. But, but, put in a different light, keeping the building as it is, or just maintaining it over time, is just not an attractive offering to people. So really, it comes down to, you know, do, do we want to keep the building? Because it's an, it's an option for the town. Long term, and it's still an option. It's a, it's an integral part of town. It has been, as opposed to somebody getting rid of it or, or changing it around. And if so, can, you know, by, by improving it and make it safer. As you can see, some of these are really just sort of safe and, and, and much more comfortable ADA compliance, that kind of thing. If we do that, then I, my personal perspective is I don't think we're gonna have droves and droves and droves of people saying, oh geez, I want to be using the Swift House. But I do think that, that we will have a considerable amount of groups thinking this is a viable option to use and it being comfortable, you know, to do so. The question the Board of Selectmen have to ask themselves, ourselves is, is this something we believe that the town wants and, and can use?
Ed, thoughts?
Well. I don't know. This, this whole thing, I was the one that was concerned about the costs and I wanted to see three written estimates, not one contractor estimates, but I know that they've been working with different ones. But I think it needs to be up to the town what they want to do with it. And unfortunately, we say it's up to the town, the people that usually come out to vote are the ones that, that want it, the people that don't really care or don't vote one way or the other. So I don't think we're gonna get a real number on that idea either. I just. If we're gonna do it, we need to do it, right? Or not? Or just put the roof on it and then figure out what we're gonna do, but. Uh, I don't know. I see this more as a few people wanting to fix and maintain the building, which it probably should have been done all along and it wasn't. And in a budget year where we're already being told by the Board of Finance, no increases, we're already gonna go over our budget by $25,000. So maybe we should discuss it and keep it in the back of our minds. So it's an item that if we have to, we can cover the roof and cut it out of the budget. And if people yell and scream and want to raise money to put the roof on it, maybe we could get people to raise money and do it themselves somehow. That's my thought.
Well, I, I, I don't think it's appropriate to ask for. Donations for municipal roofs and, and things like that. Just like asking us, asking everybody to chip in to put the roof on the, on the town hall. This is a town building. So we either bite the bullet and say it's a town building and we're gonna get it and bring it up to the same level as the other town buildings. Or we don't. I think that if we, if we don't, we're gonna have a heck of a lot more problems with leaky roofs. So my recommend, my recommendation would be to. Put, keep, get, keep the roof going in the. Keep this in the budget, the roof in the budget right now. Take under advisement, the estimate total here of 120,000. And to Ed's point, those, those are just ballpark numbers. They are not, they're not three bids, they're not ground down. It's not saying, geez, do we want to do it that far or whatever? The scope with $120,000, and is it even necessary? $3,000 to hook up to the sewer? Well, it has a perfectly good system right now. But, you know, the, so I'd say that we shelve 120 and I think we have to really bring that to the town as to how much money they want to in the future sink into the building. And.
So I, I have a couple of questions and Chris, I guess back to the task force. There's nothing here about the second floor. Which is. Very. Very challenging, just starting the first step up the stairs.
Yeah. So the second floor, basically as it stands now, and even in this renovation, or even in this estimate of 120,000, is not factored in primarily because. It might be, it might be the decision of the Board of Selectmen or whatever group goes after us if the town says they want to spend the time and the money and energy into it. To undertake a renovation of the second story, second floor, but to what purpose? It's, if you're gonna make an apartment, you know, who's gonna run it? How much do you pay for it? Do you want to be a landlord in that manner? Same thing if you wanted to make it office space. It seems to me and that it's perfectly smart use of the building. I don't know if it warrants spending all that time, money and energy to do so. Unless, and this was kicked around a little bit and, but again, it was only kicked around, it was not, it was not fielded. Unless the town felt that it would be an appropriate place to. Be under the guise of affordable housing and they went and got money for a renovation and they were the ones that operated it and we didn't. But we didn't go that route because we didn't feel it was appropriate. We really wanted to give the town the picture of. What it's gonna cost to use this building, the way it's being used presently. Upstairs has always been storage. It was once an apartment, but it was a very poor apartment. So it was really storage or a couple of little offices and that's inappropriate right now.
I guess I just worry about sort of. Taking this approach to the second floor, like it doesn't exist and.
Oh, well, we, it does exist, but it's gonna cost you another $120,000 just to redo the upstairs. And that's, that's a white ballpark figure. If you gotta re, if you gotta put a whole new stair system in, you gotta put, you know, it, it's, it's not gonna be worth it. But maybe. But that's not, that's not the primary goal of that building. The primary goal of that building is to house, to, to house functions. For civic organizations from the town of Kent and some private organizations, families and organizations, but civic organization. So I would put forward, and this is just Chris Garrity's opinion, not the, not the subcommittee's opinion. But I would put forward that, in effect, the, if we go ahead and do this, the town of Kent will be underwriting. Space. For taxpayers. Just like we underwrite space for tennis player taxpayers or playground taxpayers or community house user. You know. Ed's right. Everyone who shows up who wants something, they all show up at one time. But while that may not always be the, in my mind, maybe it's not full democracy. It is democracy touched such that there's a group forward saying, I will use this. And if you all let me. You know, I mean, there are plenty of people who are gonna be paying, there're gonna be plenty of people paying for the sidewalks in the town of Kent who will never walk on the damn sidewalks. But that's what we do. So with that, I'll end my, my soapbox stand and.
Okay. I don't. I'm not ready to. Take any specific action unless the board is pushing to. I'd like to. Spend a little more time reading the report and. Seeing where we're gonna end up with. The operating budget. It just, I'm. I'd rather. Percolate on it a little bit longer. percolate on it a little bit longer.
Well, I'll make a motion that, that we accept the report from the subcommittee and ask them to do no, no further work.
I'll second that motion.
Want to vote on the gene?
Yeah, I was just waiting for Ed to come back on. I'll lose in favor. Thanks, Chris, for the and Joyce for the work.
Thank you for all that work.
Budget. So to pick up where I left off.
Can I recap for a sec? So let's just go and say, I just want to understand that I'm reading this correctly. If I go to the very bottom line, which is where we go. I'm reading that, that the, that there is no budget increase. There is a negative budget increase of the whole, whole, whole shooting kabang, correct? We're asking, we're, our budgeting three, 13,381,439, correct?
Correct.
Which is a reduction from last year.
Correct, but I don't know.
I just, hold on, just to follow my logic. So the Board of Finance has said they want to keep a flat mill rate. What's the problem?
Well.
Not everybody has submitted their budgets yet, Chris.
What do you mean? We don't have a whole budget?
Barbara sent an email on February 5th outlining who has and who has not submitted their budget. So there's a lot of departments that have not submitted it, uh, an updated budget yet.
Why haven't they?
I can't speak for them.
I know you can't, but why do you think they haven't?
Sometimes it's contractual, you know, we hear this every year, you know, sometimes they don't have the, like, for example, I don't have the resident trooper's new increased rate. I've asked for it twice. That's one example. I, I can't speak for other people.
Okay. All right. So to, to the tune of how much do we know? Anyone know?
No.
Okay, I mean.
We'd have to get. We'd have to get that from Barbara.
Okay. So, okay, so we anticipating that this is going to go considerably higher? Which is, I mean, I don't know how to deal with this. We don't have the numbers.
Yeah, so I I guess Barbara and I'll sit down and hash through what's still not, what still doesn't have a new proposed number.
Can I ask a question? Is there a possibility, maybe once we could actually all sit down together with the Board of Finance and go through sort of some budget figures? And get some recommendations from them. Also on where they would like to see cuts. So it isn't always us being the bad three. Since they've decided that they don't want any increase across the board.
We can ask, but you know, I, I imagine that they're going to say we're not worried about, you guys have to worry about the details. We don't want a, a mill rate increase. That was that's, that's my.
Right. Because I, I, I spoke to a member a couple of weeks ago and they told me that they were, the board was looking for no increase whatsoever across the board. And I just think we should get all the numbers together. Sit down with them and go over and say, okay, this is if all the numbers together, if it's over that amount from last year. Say, well, here we are. This is what we maybe we recommended cutting. What would you like to cut also?
Well, why, why should we, why should a Board of Selectmen give them, the Board of Finance, the right to dictate the budget? It's not their role.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Chris. Their, their, the role of the Board of Finance when years ago used to be their job was to set the mill rate.
Correct. But they also, but, 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 but they also do have the, the, the policing power is a long, wrong word, but they have the authority to ask all groups to cut the, their budgets to come in line with their fiscal responsibility of the town's treasury. So that's certainly makes sense to me. I think they don't really care. Why would they care whether we get a, you know, an extra sander versus another volleyball net? What do they care? So I think personally, while I understand your, 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 your philosophy. I think really that, that unfortunately the job comes down to us to do this and go through all this. And as I whip through this, there, there's, of course, now I, I understand I'm not looking at all the data. But the data that I'm looking at, there aren't significant increases except for here and the there. So you always have the, the annual increases of things that cause the cost of the increases. But I don't really, in looking at this, I, I see only a couple of spots where there are a significant increases, a Swift House being one of them. And you know, if we're actually going to control, if you will, or go back and try to make budgets a little tighter, there's, there's some real historical data you have to go through, going three to five years out to see why somebody spent this and didn't spend that. But even when I've looked at that on a cursory level, it doesn't seem like the departments have gone have, have, let's say overinflated their budgets and not used it each year, you know? I, I mean, maybe a little bit here and there, but that's, that's what a budget's for. It's not really. So I think we, it's certainly within our purview to go ahead and do this and we just need to really rip through and see. You know, what increase, most of the increases that I see that are in pink in the, in the form I'm looking at are all based on, you know, increases to salaries. Uh, and then there are increases certainly here and there. You know, for a few things, but I don't know.
Now, what about the ambulance service? Where's that going to fall into our budget?
Well, isn't it, did they put this in here? Does anyone know?
Yeah, that should be in under, um, public.
Safety?
Right. I don't see it in.
It is not in here.
But it's not in there yet. That's what I'm saying. Right. That's where we were going to put it.
Yep. Okay. Well, I don't know what we can do if we don't have a full budget in. And I don't know how to make other departments or whomever has to do it. And maybe some of its guesswork, Joyce, if we have to guess what, uh, what the increase might be on, um, on the trooper.
Um, I will, I will ask for that yet again.
I mean, I, I hate to be as, you know, a pain, uh, like I, and, and, and sort of draw a line in the sand, but like we did unfortunately with the fire department in the last year's capital plan, but at what point to do our job, do we say, hey, you're either putting yourself in a budget or you're not going to be in the budget? Or you're just going to get picked up from last year's budget? Or you're going to get a 5% whack or whatever we decide.
Right.
But at what point do we, we have to be the, you know, this, this, the school teacher and say, hey? And or suffer and wait until the last minute, which I've seen in the past where some departments decide, okay, now they can put their figures in after everybody else has already put their figures in. It's just not fair. So I, I would respectfully submit that we get a full and complete budget. Every line in here. By next week and meet again and have some actual, you know, real discussion. And, and, and anything that is an increase gets flagged. And it better have some backup as to why it's flagged. And I would, I would even put forward why 3%. And whoever's the one who's asking for it, well, whatever the entity is, whether it's Eugene, if you're the, if you're the one asking, you know what I mean? As a person, it would be good for Ed and me to understand why 3% is, am I off base?
Are you talking about the the payroll increase that?
Yeah, we're talking payroll increase. And I'm using that only as an example.
Yeah.
And, you know, we go in year in, year in and year out, and I don't want to necessarily arbitrarily just say, well, this is the number I think. I think we need to come to it at a measured thoughtful process. And if I'm missing a point, I'd really like somebody to tell me that in writing as to why.
Right. And yeah. And it, it's not necessarily just because, um, you know, that's what, that's what we've always done or you know, that may be what's in the union contract, but is that's we need to know what the justification is.
Yep. So, um, I don't know what your guys' feeling is, but my feeling is if, if a department or a line or something that is budgeted is not in by next week's budget, we're just going to put whatever we want in it.
Yeah, you know, flat flat fund that line item.
Yep. Yep. I agree.
And I, I would like to see, you know, there are some spots where there clearly there's new, new widgets or new you know, services that I think it's important for us to see some sort of just narrative justification.
Yeah, I would be interested because in going through this, I don't see any widgets. Uh, the only thing that I, that I know of that is a significant change beyond the Swift House is, as Eddie mentioned, the ambulance budgeting. And the fire depart, oh, I'm sorry, the fire department's budget.
Fire department budget also.
They're not in here, are they? We don't, so yeah, under public safety, we don't have the KVFD request and we don't have the ambulance request.
But that is in. It has been sent in, so.
What do you mean? Oh, no, no, it's been presented. You bet.
Right. That's what I mean. Right.
Yeah, it's been presented and it's not, and it should be in this, but it's, but it's not.
Correct. Right.
So Jean, if you can have Barbara make sure that she adds those two as requested. What's, what's the line item for the trooper?
It's in public safety, which is I was just there. Line 375. So here.
So we do have a line item in it already. We just flatlined it.
Right.
Right. But Joyce, you're saying that we're going to see a jump?
I assume so. Um, I don't know that for sure. Like I said, I haven't received it yet, but in talking to Andrew, he said that there was also, um, an additional request that you and he had talked about.
Well, that hasn't been presented to the Board of Selectmen, so.
No, but I'm just letting you know that that will be added to whatever the state comes in with their figure because you and Andrew had talked about that.
Yeah, but I, I personally, we're not prepared to actually put numbers together.
Okay.
So I don't know if that's even going to make that this year's budget.
Okay.
But I mean, I can ask, I can ask him and if we want to, we can tighten that up and have that discussion. But, um, so this thing you see tipping over 200,000 then?
Yeah.
And how long have we had this? Cause you look back, we had 170, call it 170, 185, 190. With, oh, I know. Um, are we getting, do you know if we're getting any, uh, Jean, uh, the thread of the institutions here who were traditionally supporting that with revenue?
Oh, the, the two schools.
Uh, and I watch, I believe if I'm, if I'm not accurate.
Yeah, yep. I believe so, Joyce.
Can you reach out and see if that commission is still there? That way we'll at least know what income is on that side. Because that's been a significant offset.
Yeah.
Oh, Joyce, if I may, if you know, and I don't want to pin you down too much, but is there anything, any other? Like insurance is typically one that doesn't come in until later.
Health insurance has already come in. It's 2% decrease and vision and dental is flat.
Okay. So help me, what number is that? What line is that?
Well, it's in every department. Within the salary section.
I got it, got it, got it, got it, got it. You're right, right, right.
Is that on that summary page too?
The top one?
Fair, but I think there's other stuff in there, right, Joyce?
Yeah. All right. So that number, are there any other numbers that are, that are soft right now that you know of department wise?
Soft meaning?
Not, they, they haven't given us a hard budget number. They just, we just rolled it over from, you know, flatlined it.
I don't know. I'd have to, I'd have to double back with Barbara.
Okay. All right. So I mean, I guess if we have that, then we'll be able to dig into it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I have all my marching orders to get us into a better spot for the next meeting.
Okay. I just want to understand the next meetings and how they're going to be productive such that we actually move this through because traditionally we do workshops, just meet and greets with every department and every request, every grant person looking for a grant. And that's been one that I think we talked about last year, did we not? About making sure that they came in and they had the proper paperwork behind them. So we knew what they were getting. Clearly the fire department has already made their, their presentation. But, but what do we have? We've got the, uh, you get the library typically.
We have, hang on.
The library, the cemetery association, the children's center and KVFD.
Where's the rest of, where's the grants page?
Well, there's, there's chore service. Greenwood's.
But do you want them all or just the ones over 10,000? That's the only ones you've ever met with in, in past.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that meeting with them, but it would be good to know what our $5,000 to chore has been doing with a summary. We get that typically in the, in the year end report for the.
They had, they have, with the request, they have submitted narratives and Barbara has all of that information.
That'd be good to have. Yep. Thank you.
And Chris, would you be in favor? Maybe if it's ever stopped snowing, setting up maybe a full day like or a full afternoon, so we can try to bring everybody in on a time schedule and do all this meeting on one day possibly. And then I could take the day off completely.
Yeah, you know, you could do a whole day where you do it a front and then a, a break for a couple of hours in the back, but
Yep.
They're, you know, they can be, it can be long. And, and you know, the other thing is it's timing for the, the actual departments.
Right.
But I think with a less enough notice, maybe they can do it. And clearly this is all going to be done by Zoom anyway. I think typically, and Joyce, correct me if I'm wrong, we usually lumped in what we thought were fairly short, easy ones to understand and to do and got those out of the ways, knocked those out. And the ones that were usually the bigger ones took a little bit more time and, and, and uh, because part of, part of it, what, what's helpful for me is I'm just going to make it up, Ed, let's just say you're a department head and you're coming to us and you say, look, not only have, you know, my budget's grown for 3% over the last five, five years. But I really see a need going forward because to take my office to the next level, I need to do this, this and this. Can you be behind me for this year? Well, that, that color helps. Because then it, it helps us explain when we stand up in front of everybody. Well, you know, Ed's department is taking this direction and therefore he needs some funding for this, this, this term. Much like we're doing with the Swift House. You know, we recommend that we need a roof. And we're going to do it right now in this budget year versus, you know, waiting five years in the Capitol. And we're gonna do it right now in this budget year versus, you know, waiting five years in the capital.
Yep.
What else we got?
I think this is sort of as far as we can go.
I think you need to clarify when your next meeting is so Barbara knows how much time she has to get all this information put together and out to you. So you have ample time to review it prior to said meeting. Technically, according to the list, your next meeting would be Tuesday of next week, but I'm not sure that that's enough time for her to get it to you and you to digest it all.
Well, when is it today's?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Right, she'll, she'll work Friday will be the only day that she'll have to get it all together. So that may not be enough time for her.
Okay.
So you may need to push it off to later in the week next week.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we hold that meeting? Ask Barbara if you can do it because really the, what, what I see is it's, it's adding the two public safety components of the ambulance and the fire department and
Circling back with the departments that have
Circling back with the departments, exactly.
And sharing those grant requests, but
And if she can't do it, then let us know and we'll push it out.
Right, so Ed, is that an, uh, option for you? I'm gonna stop sharing.
Uh, yeah, but can we do it in the morning? Did we have a time scheduled for it yet?
Not yet. You were going to make that decision here.
And I have three, um, I have three meetings.
Next Tuesday, the, the, the twenty-third?
Yeah, I can't do anything before noon unless we do it at seven o'clock in the morning.
No, no, well, that would be fine with me, but probably not for other people. Um, well, yeah, let's plan it for the afternoon and we'll see what the weather looks like. You know what I mean? That's been the major problem here.
So what time could work for you guys?
I'm wide open Tuesday.
Okay.
I'm wide open Thursday too, so either day, if you wanna try to just push it up. It, I think we need to have, if Barbara can't make that, we need to have a, an additional time slot. So I'd say, I say, let's find out from Barbara tomorrow when she's in, she's in tomorrow?
Yeah.
Let's find out whether that's achievable. If not, then shoot out a, uh, and saying we're postponing or moving the, the meeting to Thursday and then let's get the time down. Okay, I'm wide open, so feel free to, I'll, I'll jump whatever you guys have to do. Thursday, ten to, ten to eleven, I'm out. That's it.
And I'm out ten to twelve on Thursday, but do we wanna take advantage of Barbara being in the office on, on the possibility for the Tuesday time and do it after two?
If we can, that'd be great.
Yes, you can.
So you wanna slot in pencil in two thirty, give her time to get her coat off? And then if that doesn't work, you wanna just do two thirty on Thursday, just
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks.
Do anything else on the agenda?
No.
No, that was it.
Brady. Joyce, I am going to adjourn at two fifty-three.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.